Good evening, everyone. Let's call the meeting in order. Let me, oh, wait. I'm in. Forward, reconvene. Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask, we're calling the meeting in order, and I'd like to ask clerk to report out any actions taken in closed session.
On a seven to zero vote, the board took action in closed session to deny a student's appeal of an administrative determination of unlawful discrimination.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll now have the invocation led by me, and then the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Milchiker. Okay, well, here we go again. We had more acts of violence involving shootings in our country, and this time it happened right here, in South Orange County Community College District, right in our district. Last Wednesday evening, three people were killed and six injured when a gunman opened fire at Cook's Corner. To not be moved by the senseless loss of life is really not to be human. So I'm the trustee that actually, it's not in my area anymore. It was for many years. But I actually am the trustee that lives closest to Cook's Corner. I ride my bicycle a lot down backwards and forwards on Santiago Canyon Road. I ride by Cook's Corner all the time and stop by occasionally. So it does hit close to home. And last night, when the shooting, I mean, sorry, last Wednesday, when the shootings occurred, was actually spaghetti night. People enjoying dinner, having conversations, talking about their lives, their future, their jobs. And Cook's Corner is a landmark. It's really a way that navigates back to the backcountry. For those, I know, people who live here that work in our district, and students, and faculty, and staff, administration, who live in Tribuco Canyon. And it's usually a pretty friendly and relaxed place. So we must try to come together as a nation to stop these shootings, reduce hate, and come towards reconciliation. Do I think we're going there? Doesn't seem like that. I don't see a pathway forward right now that gets us to that place. But as we've done, and I think this is probably the, fortunately, third or fourth time this year, we've let off an invocation due to shootings in our country. So I ask that we're all part of the solution. I think education is the cornerstone of the solution. And I think we all do that every day here, and I thank you for that. So I'd like to just ask that we spend a moment of silence for the victims, not only here at Cook's Corner, but Jacksonville and around the country. Thank you.
Oh, join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under thy individual with the liberty of expression. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any requests for public comments? None? All right. We'll now move on to board reports. Oh, oh, excuse me. We are going to move up an item. We're going to move up, unless anyone ejects from the board, we're going to move up eight point one, which is a presentation recognizing our district as a patriotic employer.
All right, thank you so much. So I am pleased to introduce the next item, which is a presentation to recognize the South Orange County Community College District for being named a patriotic employer. This award is given to employers who have demonstrated a high level of support to an employee who serves in the United States to armed forces, guard, and reserve. To help present the award tonight to the Board of Trustees are Nick Wilkinning, Director of Technology Services at Irvine Valley College, and Tony Marichino, a representative from the California Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. Nick, please go ahead and make the presentation.
Thank you. Everybody hear me okay? First and foremost, I want to thank the board and Chancellor Barnes for the time this evening to do this presentation. Also, I want to give kind of a little bit of background about what E S G R is and the Patriot Award. In 2022, 2022, I deployed for eight months with the National Guard. And this award is a recognition of the appreciation that the employer goes through when an employee leaves to support the armed forces throughout the world. And this is also applicable to National Guard's people as well as reservists. And in particular, there are two folks that really helped my family and my job be prepared to be able to go and support the international deployment. And so the award is a Patriot Award, is what it's called. And tonight, we're going to present to Dr. Visca-Chill, Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, and her team, representative of all the hard work that H R did to make sure that we could set up an infrastructure so that my family and future families in the district can support military operations, as well as Devit Kachatrian, Vice President of Administrative Services, my direct supervisor for stepping in in a big way and helping through the majority of the deployment and helping run the department, being a director of I T, as you all imagine, being users and consumers of technology, demands quite a bit, and with Devit's existing role, in addition to taking on technology services, that's quite a big undertaking for such a long time. So I, Tony's here with the employer support of Guard and Reserve, a D O D organization, to help with the presentation. So Tony, if you could come up and maybe give some remarks.
Good evening, Chancellor Barnes and audience. My name is Tony Marichino. I have part of the D O D Department of Defense, E S G R. We have 3,000 volunteers that do this all on their own time, and we go across the nation and the territories. What I want to do tonight is present Cindy with the Patriot Award and Devit with the Patriot Award. This is the first of the level of Patriot Awards that go out to organizations. And I want to give you a little bit of background. I worked for employer that did not support the Guard Reserve. This is back in the early 70s. And because of that, I understand what Nick has to go through. When you have an organization that supports it, it's very important because that organization becomes part of our national defense. Without that organization, we would not have a military. The National Guard and Reserve make up almost 50% of all armed forces in the United States. And if you break it down into individual M O Ss, jobs, some of them are as high as 65%. So it's very critical that organizations support this. So Cindy, I want to present you with the Patriot Award. And so I really appreciate this. Thanks for supporting him and his family. And if he couldn't do his job, because he, his job takes care of the business that his employer, his wife, and the military. So it's very important.
Thank you.
Okay, there you go.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you. Don't sit down yet, Cindy. Devit, same thing. I really appreciate this, and without you supporting him, we don't have a defense. So it's very critical, important.
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank you.
Thank you.
What I've just given them, what I've just given them is a challenge coin across the military and also in the fire departments and police departments. And these are usually good for a drink. If Nick, if you're in a bar with Nick and you pull out your challenge coin, he doesn't have his, he's got to buy everybody a drink. Okay? There's one more thing I want you to do. We have a non-binding agreement, statement of support. If you can just sign that, I'd appreciate it.
It says employer. Does me, employer?
Employer. Thank you. Appreciate it. And just for information. Go ahead. We have, currently today, we have over 31,000 National Guard Reserve on active duty around the world. We're in most countries in the United, in the world right now. So just, it's a very important job that you did. Thank you. Thank you, Chancellor Barnes. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's a good for the president.
No, this goes to you. All right. Well, congratulations to Cindy and Devit, and thank you for the recognition for our district and our employees. Thank you for that. All right. Now, we are going back to our agenda and our regular order. And I'm going to start, we're going to start with board reports. So I usually, I don't know why, I always turn to my left, so I'm going to turn to my right today. And trustee, trustee Milchiker.
Okay, okay. The Fall Flex Week was the best ever I've attended. But at both colleges, they were exceptional. They started out with the president's opening sessions, which were unique and thought-provoking. And I'll mention some of the meetings I attended at I V C first. There was the I V C technical training sessions, which was incredibly, including beyond Chat G P T. There was a guided pathway lunch and learn that was exceptional, checking in with students. Sixteen Weeks Compressed Calendar by Chris McDonald, that was very informative. Rebecca Kaminsky's sabbatical report, which is, which was really interesting about how she worked with students and learned to work with students and had ideas in how successfully to work with students. The president, President Hernandez, Hernandez homemade taco campus-wide luncheon, which was great. At Saddleback College, there was student employment, One Book One College, and they talked about Temple Grandin's new book. And Temple Grandin's going to be here from April 25th, from 12 to 2 for all of the people that have participated in the One Book One College at Saddleback College. Difficult conversations with students. The Saddleback College Digital Archive Library grand opening, Pathways to Law School, which was the sabbatical report of Emily Quinlan, which gave many, very many things that she learned about how to help students in the pre-law program. Surviving the active shooter, given by the chief of police at Saddleback College, and the vets' successful efforts and credit for prior learning for our vets at Saddleback College. So they could have, they can get credit for prior learning, even though they didn't take colleges and use it towards their graduation requirements. And once again, our staff's brilliance, camaraderie, and compassion for our students were evidence in every single one of these events I attended during Professional Development Week this semester. Also, I attended, since I'm the science advisor, volunteer science advisor for the Mars Rover Project, I attended many of those meetings, and we need volunteers. So any staffer, student member, we will take you, and it will be fun. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee J.
Summer 2023 just went by too fast. It was here and gone before we knew it. In early August, the I V C Foundation had its summer planning retreat at I V C. It was very well-attended. We introduced ourselves by telling where we were born. We were impressed with the diversity of the locations the board members were from. There was a group from the Northeast, from the Midwest. And there was a, there were board, a board member from Taiwan, the Philippines, Israel, Mexico, Cuba, England. Definitely a diverse group. The I V C Foundation has some exciting opportunities coming our way. On Thursday, October 19th, they are holding their third annual I V C Giving Day. Plans are also underway for their annual event celebrating excellence. Friday, March 8th, at the Marconi Auto Museum in Tustin. I attended excellent opening sessions at both colleges. Thanks to everyone for all their hard work in making Development Flex Week so successful. On Friday, September the 8th, will be the second annual retiree reunion and luncheon at I V C. Lunch will be served from noon to 2 P M. in the Live Oak Terrace. That will be fun-to-get-together reunion for retirees of I V C. What really excites me is the enrollment is up. Summer 2023 was up 15.3% over the summer of 2022. That is also up over the pre-pandemic enrollment. Chancellor Barnes, please tell us in your report about the fall semester as it is now the enrollment. Thank you for all who worked so very hard to make this happen. Special thanks to the outreach teams. On Wednesday, August 9th, the trustees had a meeting on preventing harassment, bullying, and unlawful discrimination. Karen DeBert and Anne Choa, our two lawyers at the district office, provided the program. It was very impressive, and they did a fantastic job. And we are very grateful to have them in our district office. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee J. Trustee Witt.
Good evening, everyone. I attended several of the events this August. I'd like to say that the professional development, morning and afternoon, was probably the best I've ever attended. I'd like to say that they had both different interests, and that was good. It was, it was great. But I really would like to say the use of videos and giving the acknowledgement of what's happening at the campus at I V C was really rewarding. They say you tell things in a thousand, a thousand pictures, or whatever the saying is, I'm not good at that. But at any rate, thank you so much for putting it into video because you really see the action of what's, of what you were explaining. I also wanted to share the foundation retreat that I attended. It was excellent, absolutely excellent. President Stern gave us so much information about the new ideas that are happening on campus, and that was very good for all of our foundation members to hear about. I also like to acknowledge two people that are in the room tonight. Last, last month, I talked about behind-the-scenes people who do our video. And today, I'd like to acknowledge the two people sitting in the audience who always help us with our A V and our computer problems up here. Thank you for always coming and being here. It makes us feel better. So Zamir Kundi, I'd like him to stand up, and I'd like Jeff Dorsey to please stand up, and we give them a round of applause. Thank you. You are in front of the scenes, and we want to know, want you to know that we do appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Inman.
Thank you. I am a schoolperson. It all started when I was five. I then spent a long time as a student, all the way through graduate school, and then a long time as a teacher. And the reason I bring this up is that I love the first day of school. It's so exciting. I have fond memories of the first part when I was a little person, of my mother getting me a new dress for each of the five days of school. Now, you can see how dated that is because people don't even wear dresses anymore. But whatever, it was neat. And so I was very happy to be part of the opening sessions because that's like our first day of school. I liked all of, all of both of them. But I was especially interested in the presentation with the comprehensive listing of awards and programs. I've always said, as a speech person, that to be clear and concise is the goal. And it's really hard to be completely clear and concise. But Dr. Hernandez did that, and it was very rewarding. And in the afternoon, I loved the new managers, what does he call it, the, where am I from, I think it is? Very, very moving and so important for us to be able to meet these new people and know something about them. And I loved the students' testimonies from Saddleback College. Chancellor Barnes suggested that perhaps chairs might report on the work that their committee is doing. I happen to be the chair of the Board Policy Subcommittee, and we did our annual work this month. At our meeting, we studied and went over 27 different policies. They were all important, but two of them particularly interested me. The first was workplace violence, and that's partly what Tim is talking about. There was a North University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. I saw that on television this morning, an active shooter situation that they had there. And later in the day, I believe I saw that it was a fat, one faculty member that was killed. So, you know, just to peel it, don't kill the faculty members. The other is child abuse reporting. I was a mandated reporter when I taught elementary school in Irvine, and I had many occasions to report. Our college faculty must also serve as mandated reporters, and this interests me because I have questions about, how do you know for sure which students in your class are underage? They look pretty similar if they're 16 or 18 or whatever. Like so many issues, these, these things are complicated. What I learned in the last couple of years in, on this committee is that our decisions are made here at S O C C C D. They are not biased, not on a whim or in a mood that someone might have that day, but on well-thought-out, studied policies. I look forward to hearing reports from the other committees.
Thank you, trustee Inman. Trustee Prendergast.
It's all been said.
Pretty much.
Yeah, I attended the opening sessions. They were amazing. Got me out of my professional development day on that Monday, so I appreciate the excuse. And I also appreciate that I was able to count the sexual harassment prevention training as part of my first day back as well. So, so thank you, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you for that. Trustee Dak.
I also have a relatively brief board report. I also attended what was mentioned up here, the opening sessions at I V C and at Saddleback on the 14th of August, as well as being a member of the Board Policy Subcommittee. Trustee Inman gave a pretty great synopsis, so I won't go too far into that. I would also like to share that I have just, I will also be using the sexual harassment training duly for my contracted position now with Orange, or excuse me, Ocean View School District up in Huntington Beach. So I'll be teaching seventh grade history up there. So not within the college district, but maybe I can get some students to come down here in about five years. All right, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Great, and I'll, I'll close it up. And I agree, most of everything's been said, and it's been great. I was at both opening sessions, or part of both, sorry. But what I heard about the remainder of it was fantastic. Congratulations to both, you, Dr. Hernandez, Dr. Stern. Moving, the moving stores. I did get to stay at Saddleback a little bit longer just because of the schedule. John, I heard great things about your session. The testimonials from the employees was just fantastic. And students, really, really nicely done. And then it's great that you did bring back the president's luncheon. Thank you for the tacos and being able to, I met faculty and that I hadn't met before, and it was great. They had no idea who I was. And when they sat down, I said, what department do you work in? So, and I thought that was great. So with that, well, let's move on to student trustee Hitty. I didn't forget.
I believe you. Thank you. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to attend the Student Trustees Workshop event through the Community College League of California. The other student trustees and I were able to learn more about the complexities and responsibilities within our role on the board. I was able to learn about the various ways other community colleges have addressed issues and implemented changes within their schools to ensure our campuses support student needs and prioritize student success. We were also able to hear from many former board members and active members of the student senate for community colleges to learn about past efforts and accomplishments. I'm grateful for the ability to learn more about the student trustee position and meet many other students with very similar goals. I'm excited to utilize the skills and tools that I have developed as I continue my role on the board. This month, I was also able to connect with Saddleback's Basic Needs Program Coordinator, Emma Lenny, and she shared with me that the program recently had a clothing drive for professional attire to support our free clothing boutique at the career fair. They currently have a full closet containing clothes ranging from professional and business attire to child and infant needs. I look forward to continuing conversations with both I V C and Saddleback's basic need programs to ensure resources are available and visible to students. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Now we'll move on to the A S G reports, and let's kick it off with Irvine Valley College. Diego.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to hear that the board enjoyed the first day of school and the first weeks. I know that the I V C students definitely did as well. We had our Welcome Week events last week, which we had over 500 students attend these different events. Some of these were, were things that support students, such as a resource fair, making sure students know right away the opportunities and the resources available on campus to help them in their academic journey. Other things such as having those type of hamster balls where you kind of just roll down something just to kind of unwind during the year. And in terms of what A S I V C is doing, a couple of weeks ago, we hosted our first summer leadership event just to have an onboarding session, make sure that everybody is, knows each other, make sure that everybody is more well-connected than ever. We are also preparing to put in place our new student justices for our student government, which is something that is in the works right now and will be fully accomplished in the next coming weeks. And just, like I said, of course, I V C is preparing. All the programs are ready for it. Speech and debate, we started our practices last week. I just came from mine today. I know that I V C is definitely trying to win yet another national championship, so am I trying to represent this district. And I, I finished my summer internship with the California State Assembly, and I highlighted that off with a Republican Party event where Congressman John Duarte came to speak. And I was honored to receive an award as a volunteer of the month from the Orange County Supervisor, Don Wagner, from the California State Assembly, and another one from the California State Assembly, and one from the O C G O P. So I'm very fortunate for all these opportunities, and I'm really looking forward to everything that is going to happen in the future. And I can't wait for the semester, and I'm sure all the students are very excited. So I hope all the faculty is as well. Hopefully, the grading won't get to them too soon.
All right, thank you for that update. I understand President Lee is not able to make it, I think, for the rest of the semester due to some scheduling conflicts. And sorry to miss her. But I think we have, is it spring?
Yes.
Spring Momeni?
Yes.
You're going to provide the update. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees and members of the public. I'm Spring Momeni, Vice President, First Year in Government. That's how I call it. I'm here today on behalf of Gloria Lee to report what A S G has been working on so far. I'd like to start off by giving you guys a brief overview of our A S G restructure. Last year, we focused a lot on readjusting our bylaws so that this year's student government has a system that's equivalent to our governmental structure. We now have an executive branch. We have a senate, and we have a judiciary branch. Along with the restructure, we also added four new leadership positions, chief justice and three senators-at-large. Over the summer, we were extremely successful in gaining lots of students who are passionate and have interest in engaging with student government at Saddleback. Our main priority right now is to have all these open positions filled by October 1st. With the help of student development, we are taking initiative towards hosting several involvement sessions on campus, such as the Involvement and Volunteer Fair. One of them took place on August 22nd, and the other one is in two days, on August 30th. A S G works towards planning team bonding workshop-style events at least once a month. And during every meeting, there's going to be a specific topic discussed, such as civic engagement, the upcoming 2024 elections, student diversity and engagement, mental health, and Pride Month awareness. Our student organization effortlessly works towards supporting our Saddleback students. We have many events and additional resources planned in the future, and I'm excited to share all of them with you guys. And that's my report for today.
Great, welcome again, and thank you for the update. Moving on, let's go to the I V C Academic Senate. Do you want to?
I still struggle with the mic. Good evening. I hope you're all doing well. And I wanted to take this time to update you on a couple of Academic Senate goals that we have set ourselves for the 2324 academic year. Our first goal is the enhancement of faculty professional development. Our senate is committed to providing a more enriching professional development, development culture for our faculty members. And to this end, we're developing a comprehensive plan that includes workshops on innovative teaching techniques, technology integration. includes workshops on innovative teaching techniques, technology integration, and diversity and inclusion in the classroom, essentially aligning ourselves with the vision 2030. Preparations are also underway for our PRT visits, and again, I mentioned this at my last update, and that is, we're having a team of professionals who are committed to helping us with the professional development culture on campus, and those visits will begin in September. In sum, the initiatives aim to create a robust framework for faculty development and obviously impacting the academic experiences of our students. Our second goal is to strengthen our faculty engagement. I spoke briefly about this at my last update as well. As we navigate the implications of legislative changes, such as AB 928, AB 1111, it is imperative that we foster strong interdepartmental collaboration. To facilitate this, we will implement strategies designed to enhance communication and engagement among faculty departments. Our mantra for this endeavor is "Stronger Together," as I believe it encapsulates the spirit of unity we aspire to achieve in preparation to the work ahead. Last but not least, we aim to streamline senate processes and procedures, and we're going to embark on a comprehensive audit of existing documents and intending to identify areas of updating, and of course, we'll also go through this in a collaborative revision manner to ensure that all the structures align with our institutional goals and meet the current needs of our academic community. Thank you for letting me share our goals.
Thank you. Now, we have Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, trustees. Chancellor Barnes, I love following Rebecca Beck because at dinner this evening, I said, you know, the two academic senates are on parallel tracks. Their new professional development center, the Center for Teaching Excellence, ours is the Center for Teaching Innovations. So, it is like we are, I just could say, yeah, what she said. Our goals are very similar in terms of enhancing professional development, and I'd like to discuss a little of that with you today. First, I want to start by saying that thank you all for attending professional development, the Flex Week activities. I'm only sorry I couldn't go to IVC's because I had to be at Saddleback's, but we had a wonderfully successful week, events such as, sorry, zero textbook cost, which Saddleback is one of the leaders in adopting ZTC, and most of our, I think, most of our programs are now ZTC. So, you can get a certificate or an associate's degree, and all your courses will have no, will be zero textbook cost, which is fantastic. We also had sessions on innovative pedagogies, and we will continue with those throughout the academic year. We had a spectacular orientation for all of our new 27 faculty. Almost all of them were there, and there was information provided by HR, by the Faculty Association, by the Academic Senate, and the feedback that I got was that everything was incredibly useful, so we're going to continue to do that. We don't anticipate having an incoming class like that for many, many years, but, you know, we put that in our pockets to continue. As Rebecca said, in terms for IVC, professional development will be a central focus of our efforts this year, and we have a grant, the culturally relevant pedagogies and practices, and we're using that grant to fund a series of ally trainings in the spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot, and I just say, for those who weren't at Saddleback, Margot delivered a very powerful testimony of, I think, transformation in her own journey, so thank you for doing that. Now, we have Faculty Association.
Yes, thank you. So, I'd like to acknowledge and thank all the faculty that have spent the last weeks to months prepping courses, especially new courses, and revised courses and new programs to support our students' learning, transfer goals, and career goals. I'd also like to thank the faculty who added courses and students during the last month to meet the student enrollment needs and help our district strengthen our overall enrollment numbers and student completion rates. In closing, I just want to thank also Jody Cassiano for her 10 years of service to our students and district as she retires. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Now, we'll turn to the IVC Classified Senate.
Good evening, everyone. So, I think, almost like what Margot said, we're also pretty in parallel with our fantastic faculty colleagues, because in our first General Assembly for our Classified Senate at IVC, we did talk about our goals, and similar to what Rebecca said, it's the year of processes and protocols, and that's one of the main focuses that we'll have this year with Classified Senate. Besides that, similar to what they've said, we're also putting a huge focus on professional development. As I mentioned in my report in July, we're trying to, we are trying to align our processes with our Saddleback counterparts in terms of processes, in terms of how to get professional development money, but also the amount that we are able to award to full-time and part-time classified professionals. In terms of our caring campus, we did hold a caring campus presentation during Flex Week, and we reminded our colleagues of our commitments in terms of what we should do to portray that we are caring campus, such as naming our name tags, wearing our name tags, wearing our shirts, and of course, like returning emails and all that kind of stuff. And of course, I want to do a huge shout out to many of my classified colleagues who volunteered at a lot of our welcome booths during Welcome Week, who assisted a lot of students. And in closing, we are pretty excited to what this new academic year has for all of us.
Thank you for that report, and it does not look like that the Saddleback College Classified Senate is here. Is anyone supposed to speak? Okay. All right, that leaves us with CSCA, Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Barnes. I was unable to be present at the last board meeting because I was attending the CSCA Conference in Reno, Nevada, which is a wonderful environment to have a conference. One of the main emphasis that were, that was really part of the conference was the dedication not only to our respective schools and to the students, but also to the communities in which they serve. The communities are really depending on classified professionals to really make sure that no matter what job they do, they support the students, that they're there for the students. The majority of our classified professionals across the state of California mainly work in K-12 systems, and so it is important to reach young hearts and young minds and young souls. And so, we had many different speakers that really emphasized how we can do that. And so, classified professionals, knowing that young students have such an ability to learn so many things, the one thing that they need to learn is to learn to trust. And so, if we do not let down our students, no matter what age they are, they will learn to trust and know they have the support from the classified professionals. We also, as a delegate body, gave a lot more opportunities to our retired CSCA members who actually are doing much outreach to the communities, and they've been such an important, integral part of CSCA's representation in reaching the communities, and we're very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Scott. I don't see anyone here from POA, okay? Any board requests for reports? No? All right, well, we're now moving on to public hearings, item 5.1, and we will conduct public hearing. So, we are now at Board Agenda, item 5.1, regarding a public hearing on the initial proposal on the mutually agreed reopeners for Article 30, wages by the district and the South Orange County Community College District Faculty Association. Before we hold the public hearing, Vice Chancellor Cindy Viscachill will provide an introduction. Will you?
Well, we're doing the public hearing on the Agenda, item 5.2, the proposed budget of the district for fiscal year 2324.
Oh, I've got the...
You did it right, but it's...
Oh, okay. Vice Chancellor Gable. I just read it.
So, the Agenda item 5.1 pertains to a public hearing for the adopted budget for fiscal year 2324, as required by the California Code of Regulations Title V, Section 58301. The public hearing was noticed in the Orange County Register, is posted on the district's website, and has been available for public inspection in the district office lobby. This hearing provides the public an opportunity to comment on the budget before it is adopted.
Does the board have any questions for staff to assist with their understanding of this matter? Seeing none. Board, item 5.1, the public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Public comments are not to exceed two minutes. Don't see any public comments. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the Board of Trustees? Seeing none. Item 5.1 is concluded. We will now move to item 5.2. This is not correct.
This is the old one.
Excuse me.
It's okay.
Okay, got it now. All right.
We're at number 10.
We are now, we will now move to item 5.2, approval of the proposed adopted budget for fiscal year 22, 2324. I will call for a motion in a second.
Motion.
Motion from Trustee Inman.
Second.
Second from Trustee Prendergast, and are there any questions or comments?
Is it time now? I can talk?
Yes.
Well, we'll do, can we do the presentation first, and then we'll open it up for questions after that?
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, so, we have with us tonight our Executive Director of Fiscal Services, Ms. Connie Kavanaugh, who will be doing the adopted budget presentation for us.
Good evening. There's much confusion tonight. We really want to adopt the budget. All right, I'll get started. So, we always like to point out the board's philosophy on budget to ensure wise and prudent use of public resources, promote financial strength and stability, and maximize educational opportunities for our students. Just as a reminder of our budget development guidelines that were adopted by the board in January, we have these 10 topics that we focus on as we develop our budget. Next is just a summary of our actual expenditures and revenues for the fiscal year 2223 that we just closed out. Just to highlight, the bolded item at the top is our unrestricted general fund, which serves as our operating budget for the district. Our beginning balance was just over $99 million, revenues were $352.7 million, expenditures of $344.4 million, leaving us with an ending unrestricted general fund balance of $107.5 million. All of our funds are identified here on this slide. I'm not going to read through each line item, but total for all funds, our ending fund balance was $678.8 million. Next, I just want to go over the assumptions we used to develop the budget, starting with our revenues. So, we developed the adopted budget based on the state enacted budget. Our SCFF calculation included a COLA of 8.22%. There was no growth funding provided in the SCFF calculation, and the emergency conditions allowance ended in the 2223 fiscal year, so we are working off of a three-year FTEs average that includes projections for our 2324 FTEs. We have assumed secured property tax revenues of an increase of 3.5% based on the county's recommendations, which allowed us to have a basic aid allocation of just over $105 million. We project our non-resident tuition at 95% of our actual resident tuition, I'm sorry, non-resident tuition that was collected in the 2223 fiscal year. Our state categorical funding, which serves as the primary source of our restricted funding, is based on the advanced apportionment from the state, so that's an actual figures that come from the state in July, so it's our most current information that we have for our projected revenues for the 2324 fiscal year. Our unrestricted lottery revenue is estimated at $4.32 million. That's equivalent to $177 per FTEs. Our Education Protection Act, or EPA, revenues is estimated at $2.56 million. We receive $100 per FTEs, and those funds are budgeted for part-time faculty salaries and benefits. Our interest income is estimated at $7 million, which is quite an increase over what we had projected in prior years. It's a little bit less than what we had actually received in 2223, just to be conservative, but we have seen quite an uptick in our interest rates from the county treasury where primarily our funds are held. The last quarter, we were at 3.62% interest rate, which is dramatically higher than we've seen in the past, recent past especially. And our ground lease revenue is estimated at just under $3.6 million. This is a very snapshot picture of our DRAC model calculations. It's a summary of the allocated funds through our DRAC model, just highlights, you know, the primary sources are SCFF calculation. As a reminder, we don't actually receive SCFF revenue from the state because we're a basic aid district, but we calculate those revenues as if we were to receive them for the purposes of our DRAC model calculations. So, the total allocations line there represents what we have budgeted for ongoing revenues for each of the colleges as well as district services, but the total sources of funds includes our ongoing revenues as well as prior year funds that we are able to redistribute through the DRAC model. So, the bottom line includes beginning balances from each of the colleges as well as district services for what we have budgeted for the total available funds to be spent for the 2324 fiscal year. Moving on to our expenditure assumptions for the budget, we have included salary increases that reflect all of those that were included up through the last board meeting where we approved the COLA increases for the bargaining units. Our person-stirs rates are set now for the fiscal year at 26.68 for pers and 19.1 for stirs. We had a 7.6% increase in our health and welfare benefits over the prior year. Those are all set now in our plans, so that's the actuals. We attended, we had a slightly lower amount. The good news is our unemployment insurance rate dropped down to 0.05%, which is back where we were pre-COVID. Workers' comp is just 0.01% greater than it was last year at 1.25%, but still a really low percentage, so we do a good job on our workers' comp. And our property and liability insurance has been budgeted at 1.6 million. That includes all of our coverages, including cybersecurity. Our adopted budget reserves, so our reserve for economic uncertainties, remember last year, we updated our policy to ensure that not only do we meet the 7.5% of unrestricted revenues that we need, but because we opted into the emergency condition allowance, we needed to increase our reserves to an equivalent of two months of operating budget. So, we set aside an additional 3.5% of projected unrestricted expenditures for both the colleges and district services. The combination of those two amounts leaves us at $27.45 million. We also set aside a reserve for basic aid that's composed right now of two pieces, one being 20% of our unrealized tax collections, just as a contingency, and then based on our actual collections last year, our property taxes were greater than we had anticipated, primarily as a result of increase in supplemental property taxes. So, that additional $2.4 million is held in reserve and will be available for distribution for the 2425 fiscal year. Just wanted to pictorially put together for you a summary of our total funds that we allocate as a district. So, this represents how much each area is receiving. It's primarily the DRAC allocation, as well as the basic aid allocations that are distributed through the KIC and DTC. through the KIC and DTC recommendations. So, it just highlights for each area how much, what the percentage of the total allocation each area is receiving. I'd like to highlight district services is just at 6% of the total funds allocated. So, we're doing a good job there administratively. And then, the primary allocations go to the colleges. Saddleback College receiving 46% and IVC receiving 26%. For our adopted budget, this is a summary overview of our budget by fund. Again, just to highlight the top line, that's our district operating budget. As we saw the, on the, one of the earlier slides, our beginning balance now, which was our prior year, ending fund balance is $107.5 million. We've budgeted to receive $354.5 million in revenue, but expenditures are budgeted at $373.4, which results in a deficit for the year. So, our ending fund balance is projected to be $88.6 million. Again, it highlights all of the funds here. I won't read them all individually, but collectively, our total budgeted expenditures for all funds is just under $1 billion at 977.8. But we project to have ending fund balance of $363.6 million, the bulk of which is in our OPEB trust as well as our capital outlay funds. So, looking ahead, we just continue to monitor the state economy, and we always look at our property tracks, tax trends to make sure we're on target to receive what we're anticipating to receive. We're monitoring enrollment and FTES trends. I know our fall enrollment is ticking up, which is great news. I believe IVC is very close to where they were pre-pandemic, so that's great news for us to be growing again. And we're continuing to focus on our ATEP efforts to work with prospective tenants and grow that property out there. And with that, does anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Well done. I think, I think Trustee Witt has a question.
Yes, I wanted to ask you, when I was reading this, I'm going to take IVC because IVC was first listed. And you talked about the adopted budget at IVC being 115-point-something million. Last month, you had written down 111 million, and I can see how it can change. But it says that it was consisting of 95 million in reserve and 19.3 million at the beginning of the fund balance. And I'm thinking, that's a lot. And I'm thinking that we have problems with classes because we drop them because we don't have 15 or 16 in the class. We don't offer classes that are really necessary for some students to fill their, the prerequisites, or not prerequisites, but to fill the course that's needed for their discipline. And I'm thinking, this is about, what, 18% in revenue here? So, I'm thinking, wouldn't it be better if we use 6% in revenue and the rest that we can use for student success?
So, the colleges develop their budgets, sorry to defer to someone else. I don't know if DeVet wants to jump up and speak to this on the spot, but I compile all of the budgets, but the colleges really work independently to derive their own operating budgets. I don't know if DeVet or Dr. Hernandez can speak to. I have the budget book right here if you need to.
You have so much page you're referring to.
Yeah.
Go to slide seven.
Well, I didn't use it from your slides. I used it from the information that I got.
Right, but the number that you quoted is on slide seven.
Okay.
If you flip back, honey, to the slides, you'll see. Right there.
Slide seven of 13?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so the total funds altogether is the 115 million, Trustee Witt. And 19.3 million of that is coming from beginning balances or we're budgeting as a reserve. It is a higher amount than historically, you know, we've experienced, and it is something that we're looking at as far as investment into the future. The reason it's higher is because of the, during the pandemic years, obviously, the on-ground operations were down to the minimum. So, we did experience a lot of savings as a result. Also, HERF funds, the federal relief funds assisted with that to defer some of the costs or cover the operational costs that we, in the past, covered with college funds. So, all of that resulted in this one-time ending balance, and that's something that the college is looking closely to invest into innovation, efficiency, something that helps the college in the long run. But it is something we're looking closely as well.
Well, I understand that. I'm not questioning the numbers at all. I'm just questioning why we don't use some of that money for our student success. We keep talking about that, and I think that we could use that money to offer more classes when we know that certain classes, like anatomy, physiology, chemistry, you've got people waiting in line, you've got waiting lists. And we have, I know we're even doing classes at IVC, and I applaud this, on Saturday, with classes of 80 people in the classroom. So, I'm just saying, I'd like to see more of that. I don't want to, I really don't want to hear students, because I was in the nursing program. I can't get into the sciences. So, let's offer more classes, and let's offer them, if we have problems with placement, let's just offer them on Fridays and Saturdays. I guarantee you, they will be full. So, use some of that reserve, 19-point-some-million dollars is a big chunk of change. And I'm really thinking we should use it for our educational purposes. Am I wrong to say that reserve should just be, I mean, I really studied this, reserve should just be about 6% to 10%, not 19%?
Okay, why don't we? Can we let them respond?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Dr. Hernandez.
I do think that our ending balances for the last couple of years, for the reasons Vice President Kuchatryan shared, have been anomalies, a lot on the higher end, particularly with the infusion of state and federal relief funds. I do want to point out that when you look at our fall section count compared to prior year, we have increased our section count by 17%. I also know that the Office of Instruction has communicated to all the instructional deans prior to the beginning of the fall semester that if you have classes that are waitlisted, continue to add additional sections so that we can serve those students. And when you look at our fill rates, we're doing really well in filling all of our available sections. I don't have that disaggregated by discipline. I do know that some disciplines, particularly in the physical sciences, it's been very difficult to find adjunct faculty to be able to add additional sections, oftentimes in courses like chemistry. But I do know that our Office of Instruction with our instructional deans have been very cognizant of continuing to meet student demand so that, to your point, students are able to complete their degrees in a timely manner. In terms of student success efforts, I do believe we have, you know, there, it's, so I guess it is a philosophical, what, you know, what is the minimum ideal percentage? And so, what I will say is that, looking at our overall growth in section count, I think that demonstrates that from even a year ago, we have continued to increase, and I think that is demonstrated in the enrollment growth that we've experienced this year.
And that's wonderful. I'm not challenging any of that. I'm challenging the amount of money in reserve that we could use for, for what you, what you say, adding new courses, not even new courses, but new sections, et cetera. Because students do hear, well, we didn't meet the enrollment, so we have to cancel the class. And I just hope that we don't have to say that anymore.
Can I just follow up, if you don't mind?
Sure.
So, on that, good question. On that question, so are there students that are waitlisted? I mean, do you have data on students waitlisted that are not getting into the classes they want? Do we have that data? I mean, is it a lot? Is it little? Is it, they're getting everything they want?
I'm going to base it on Trustee Riedel's last statement. It's not so much kids not getting into classes because they're waitlisted. It's a class being canceled because it doesn't have the minimum number enrollment.
She mentioned wait. She mentioned wait.
I know, but if I'm getting her point is, we could somehow use money to pay for a class even though it doesn't have the minimum number. Is that what you're getting at?
Absolutely. That's one of them. Yeah. That's, that's one.
It sounds like if they have the ability to open sections, they're doing that. The flip side of what you're saying is, what do we do with the section that gets collapsed because it doesn't have enough students?
Correct.
That's what I'm understanding.
But then, okay, that's a different issue than the waitlist. Okay.
Well, they're, they're all points. They're all points leading to meeting what the students need, and they need classes. So, and I applaud that we've got so many coming up this fall. This fall is new. Okay, sorry.
No, 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 no sorries. Thank you for your question. I appreciate the line of questions. I will tell you that waitlists, I would assume across the district, but for sure at IVC, are looked at daily by our instructional deans. They are evaluated for ability to add more. We are judging if we can add them as face-to-face, traditional, on-ground, because more and more students are asking for those. And we are running those at lower numbers than what the faculty contract would call out for, as a matter of fact. That way, we can rebuild our campuses and support our students in our community. We are also adding online courses if waitlists, sorry, if class sections, because you're also talking about enrollment numbers, if it gets down into a low double-digit number or even a single digit, we often convert a traditional on-ground class to online class to allow it to grow legs, if you will. And often, we will push it to a late start to give it more time for students to fill. So, what you're asking, are we doing, and again, love the questioning, these are all efforts. I wouldn't say that there's any one particular thing that's making a success in the numbers, but it's the culmination of all of these. And to your point about adding more sciences, some of you know I've come from the sciences, myself and my training. It's always a challenge, and yourself as well, coming from Allied Health Field, to have that much time dedicated to one or two classes because you are blocking out hours of the day. You do have to go to Saturdays. You do have to go to Fridays. And we are looking at those as well. The challenge is not only the time of day or how many days in the week there are to offer those. We've had further challenges with finding faculty who can teach them because some of these sciences, for example, chemistry. In the field of chemistry, out in the, out in the wild, if you will, out in the private sector, they will stay in the private sector and forego coming to our campus just because of the pay differential. But there are a lot of faculty who still want to be here and give back. So, we continue to look at these things and evaluate how we'll move forward in bringing more qualified and individuals who want to be here in the sciences. So, again, it's a culmination of an aggregate of all the different factors you're bringing up to lead to what you're seeing today. So, we'll continue working on it.
Well, thank you very much. I didn't mean to be rude in any way of what we.
Oh, I appreciate it.
What we are doing. It's just that, for the last many years, you hear that, I can't get into this class. Well, I said, go to IVC. I can't get into that class at IVC. So, the I can't get in is still out there. And when I read this and saw 19.3 million.
Yep.
In reserve, I'm thinking, okay, why don't we use that? And I'll be honest, in my day, we didn't have prob, well, at least in the nursing program, everybody wanted to work overtime. So, I'm very surprised in other disciplines that they don't. I don't understand. But like you said, people stay in their own discipline and not going to academia. And that's too bad. Yeah.
Thank you again.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the information.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay.
We got it all involved in answering that one. That was a whole fledged answer.
Any other questions?
If I may add, from a student's perspective, I have experienced similar situations to Trustee Riedel's testimony and amongst many of my peers as well. I don't, I haven't looked at the specific data as far as waitlist go, but if you check chemistry, biology, any of those courses, right now or even right before the school year, these classes have filled up and are on waitlist of upwards of 16 students. Sometimes these do open up, but I've, myself have been blocked from taking classes such as bio4A and probably similar classes that you've experienced throughout the nursing program in the past. But this is definitely still something among students that I've observed personally.
Can we do one more thing? I thought about this. Okay, here I go. Can we add labs? Like, let's say, we have labs for the sciences, et cetera, but can we start adding labs to classes that don't have labs? They would be more of a teaching, well, it's always teaching. What do I want to say? Tutoring, maybe it's, it's a lab that goes with, let's say, statistics. All right? So, when you add that lab, you get an extra half FTEs or a whole FTEs, and that would add to our coffers.
It's actually a very good question. We have done some of those things historically. So-called study sessions have been very common. I will tell you, the trend, Trustee Riedel, has been to move away from those to try to reduce excess credits in some of the credentials because they do add credits for students. And the more credits you add beyond what's needed for transfer, unfortunately, the less likely they are to complete at all. We see those opportunities and try to take advantage of them where there's value added for the additional course. But again, space can sometimes be a consideration. If you're going to add an additional lab, that means now you have another room that you're going to need in addition to the original class, which makes it difficult to do all the cross-scheduling to meet the demands for a biology or chemistry class in particular. So, one issue we have with those classes in responding to waitlists is finding the adjunct faculty who are qualified to treat them. The other thing is because a lecture lab class requires two spaces at two different times, it is much more challenging to try to add a class at the last minute in response to a waitlist because the schedule may not leave those kinds of slots available, hence Saturday scheduling. It's, it is complicated, and I hear the frustration, and we're doing everything we can to try to meet it, especially with growing enrollment. It's, it's more challenging, but it's a good challenge to have.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm getting a little confused then on, is the high reserve amount because you have this money and you're, you're not able to spend it? Or is it, you set that reserve, it's in there, but you still have enough money to do what you need to do? I, I think what she's trying to get at is, why aren't we able to use this money? And I don't think, from what I'm hearing, it's a problem with being able to use it. It's, you don't have a need to use it because it was so much higher because of the HERF funds and so forth. But over the next couple of years, it'll get down to a normal reserve percentage? Is that what I'm hearing?
Indeed. We think the revenue that's coming in is probably balancing with our expenditures, but what we've experienced in the last couple of years is an influx of one-time revenue. So, it's important that we not add one-time revenue into expenses because we won't have the one-time revenue to meet those ongoing expenses going forward. So, what President Hernandez is trying to do, if I can speak for John, and what I'm trying to do at Saddleback, is make investments with those one-time funds, not adding to the annual operating budget, but make selective investments that will hopefully make students more successful down the road. So, new furniture, new software with zero textbook cost, buying textbooks that we can lend out. All of those things are investments that will make students more successful. But if we just keep adding more classes without the demand for it, we're adding to the budget and setting ourselves up and our, and our successors up for failure in their own financial future.
And I would just confirm your, your point, Trustee Prendergast, that it isn't a lack of funds or financial resources that is preventing us from adding additional classes. It's the various constraints and examples that have been shared up to this point.
Well, I can't, I just want to say one more thing. I do know that property taxes have gone up, and people are buying and selling. They, they're, they're not able to take their Proposition 13 or whatever with them. So, now, when you buy a house, let's say at $2 million, you're paying, what, 60, you know, $60,000 in, in property tax. Now, three years ago, that wouldn't have been the case. You would have bought that house for $1 million. So, I'm thinking that the cost of housing, as it's going up in Orange County, we're getting more money in basic aid.
We are.
I know.
Basic aid can't all go to funding the colleges. That's the DRAC model.
I'm not talking.
You could get $3 billion in basic aid, and that wouldn't help the college budget. The DRAC model prevents that. That's the whole point.
Yeah, but when DRAC goes down, basic aid goes up.
And, well, if enrollment goes down to where the DRAC model gets reduced, then you're right. The basic aid amount is greater, but you still can't then put it into the college. College budget is based on what they get from the state. The basic aid, the extra, is irrelevant to student service. It's what we use.
It's what we use for capital improvement. It's what we use for maintenance. It's what we use for one-time spending. You can't just take basic aid and put it to the colleges, or you collapse the entire DRAC model. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But we don't really depend on the DRAC model for income. Okay. It's enough.
No, you're a hundred percent right. We don't depend on it for income. But the income, no matter how high it goes, doesn't increase the college budget. College budget is based on a model. So, whether basic aid comes in at two million or twenty million, the amounts that the college is funded by is based on their FTEs and the state model. So, higher basic aid amount, higher extra money, just means we can have more money to build buildings and improve our facilities. It doesn't help add to more student service, unfortunately. Or fortunately, depending on your perspective of whether we keep the DRAC model or not. I mean, you're a hundred percent correct. We could dip into the extra all we want, but then, if it goes away, we're screwed.
So, this whole DRAC model thing has come up many times since I've been on the board in the last ten years, and whether we keep it, whether we ditch it, whether we change it, whether we modify it. I will say that basic aid is, we've also used it for actually more than one-time expenditures. And I believe it is used, correct me if I'm wrong, for all of our, or most of our IT expenditures. So, those are ongoing expenditures. So, it's not true to say basic aid is only used for one-time expenditures. So, but I think the Chancellor wanted to say something.
I just want, just maybe to wrap up the discussion, I just wanted to validate, you know, Trustee Rydell, what you're saying. And I think, what I'm hearing everyone say, the beautiful part of it, is that we're all aligned with regard to the value of focusing on students and student success. And one of the markers for that is equitable access, which is measured through enrollment, right? Because enrollment is really all about equitable access. And so, just to kind of reiterate, and Trustee Jay, you had asked me to report on enrollment. So, our lovely Vice Chancellor McDonald was feeding me some data, but I also pulled up the Envision Report. And so, I, just to kind of reiterate, both the FTEF, full-time equivalent faculty, which is a marker of how much money we're putting on the schedule, has increased across the district by almost eight percent. So, to President Hernandez's point, both colleges have put additional sections on the schedule, which is a beautiful thing. And that has resulted thus far, and this is again according to our daily Envision Report, to a headcount of almost ten percent increase over last fall thus far, and FTEs, full-time equivalent students, of over eleven percent, eleven point four three percent. So, there's definitely a lot of focus on enrollment. And I'm talking to colleagues across the state, and some of them perhaps realized enrollment growth sooner than us. But I'm telling you, we've been super intentional at the colleges with employing strategies to ensure that we can increase our enrollment. So, I know my colleagues, I love to boast. I'm like, "Where are you?" And they're not in the double digits, I'll tell you. So, that's a testament to the good work that's happening already in our district. And then, the other thing I just want to reiterate, and President Stern talked about it. It is true. So, we have a healthy reserve, which keeps us in a fiscally sound state for being a basic aid district. And I think we'll continue to look at the one-time monies to be sure that we are filtering those dollars. And you heard some examples from President Stern, to be sure that we're filtering those dollars in such a way to ensure that, you know, our students are succeeding. So, I think we have that as a value. And then, perhaps, you know, this might be a good study session for the board, enrollment and budget and this type of thing, just to kind of put that back on the table. But with regard to low-enrolled classes and that kind of thing, and I appreciate Vice President Miranda, you talking about that and some of the decisions that take place in the instructional arena as to whether or not a class gets cut or not. The state also sets standards of practice for being inefficient, for efficiency. Because, and again, and sometimes we're not efficient, which means we're not earning the dollars that we're putting on the schedule. And so, I know that the colleges also grapple with that. So, it's tough decisions. It really is. But I think we agree and align with regard to the values and principles behind the decision-making. And I think, you know, we never arrive and are doing like the perfect thing. So, I think there's always room for improvement. So, we could take a look at that and be sure that we're putting the dollars to good use.
Thank you. I know I took up a lot of time, but this is so important. And maybe I should get the president's, both the cup that I got on my students' ones. It said, "You're caught between a rock and a hard spot," because I used to say that. And it's true. You're caught between a rock and a hard spot. You know, we have, we know that we have some funds, and how do you use it so that you can do the best with student success? But I just don't want to hear from my constituents, "Well, my kid couldn't get in." And, I mean, I don't advertise that we have such a great reserve. So, yeah. All right. Thank you very, very much for doing all this.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget? I was going to ask one that was kind of related to Trustee Rydell's question. I think it's more for Ann Marie. You might be off the hook. Yeah, our reserve balance percentages, are they, how do they, are they in line with what the league recommends? And what are, you know, other, both the other Orange County districts and other districts that are similar to ours around the state?
I would say they're in line with the other Orange County districts.
Like the percentages?
The percentages, yes. What the Chancellor's Office recommends, which changed just about two years ago, is that districts have two months of their operating expenditure, so general fund operating expenditures. And the Chancellor's Office, when they say general fund, they say, they mean unrestricted and restricted. So, two months of your operating expenditures, that's basically seventeen percent. When you look at our budget, our total general fund, and look at our total expenses compared to our reserve balance of eighty-eight point six million, that's twenty-one point seven percent. So, I would say we're in line. We're on the high end of what the State Chancellor's Office recommends for our total general fund. Our unrestricted general fund is obviously higher, because it doesn't have the restricted expenditures in there. And there is no fund balance for your restricted expenditures. So, when you pull those out, we're a little bit higher, but.
So, this for the district as a whole you're talking about, including the college budget?
Yes, yes. Yeah. But as Vice President Kikatrian mentioned, our fund balances have grown in the last three years because of the pandemic and all of the influx of money, not just the HERF funds from the federal. So, remember, we received sixty-three million dollars from the federal government in HERF funds. We've also received probably close to thirty million from the state for the exact same thing. So, we've had a huge influx of funding that we typically wouldn't have that has saved us spending our unrestricted general funds for those purposes. So, over the years, as Dr. Hearn mentioned, or Dr. Stern, sorry, not Hearn. I confused Hearn and Stern. Or Hernanderson Stern, yeah. Anyways, as they mentioned, I think in future budget years, you'll start to see us spending down those reserves as it comes. But we're in a great position. We've been, you know, this is probably the best position that we've been in since I've been here. So, I think we're in the right place moving forward. Our enrollment trends are up. That's only going to help us. So, we're doing well right now.
Ann Marie, what was the reserve when you first came here?
I don't know, off the top of my head. It's grown.
Okay. Was it less than ten million?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we have a motion and a second on the item, and I think we can go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Budget is approved. All right. We already, let's see, we are now at resolutions, six point one. Very important resolution, Women's Equality Day. So, I think, Trustee Inman, you're going to handle this.
Yes, a very qual, a very important resolution indeed. There is one resolution this evening. It's Women's Equality Day. Therefore, be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District commemorates Women's Equality Day, August twenty-sixth, as a national day celebrating the importance of the women's suffrage movement and the work to secure and expand equal rights today. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
And now, we will vote.
Resolution carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now, on to, that's good. Glad it passed unanimously. We're now, what is?
Are you going to vote no?
No, never, never.
Don't you want to go home?
No, no, no. That's always a yes vote, every time. There's, okay, we're moving on to, we already did eight point one at the beginning, Patriotic Employer. So, now, we're on to our consent calendar. Do we have any polls?
I would like nine point four.
Trustee Jay polls nine point four. Do you have another poll? Just nine point four?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
I move the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, a motion from Trustee Prendergast on the balance. Second from Trustee Rydell. So, let's go ahead and vote on the balance. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. So, Trustee Jay, nine point four.
Four. It's the schedule, and I, things are, it's SRDE, jazz dancing level one. Is that distance now, on the computer, doing these PE classes? Distance education? Okay, thank you.
You're referring to the curriculum? Yes. SR means Scheduled Review, so that class is up for scheduled review. And as we go through our schedule review, all of our classes, we've asked folks to determine whether or not they're wanting to keep the distance ed designation an addendum in their courses for either emergency or for permanent. And so, they will just go through that process as part of the update.
Okay.
So, Trustee Jay, it can be offered.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean that we.
Doesn't mean it is.
Distance education.
Well, during the pandemic, I will remind us, we had to do the impossible.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Do you move the item now?
So moved.
Motion from Trustee Jay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Trustee Milchiker. Let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
President Jamal, point of personal privilege. You got your three, Isaac. You can go home. Thank you.
All right. Okay, now, we're on to Business Services, ten point one. Educational Partnership Fund Grant Program between the City of Irvine and the District on behalf of the IVC Foundation. Motion, sorry, motion, Trustee Prendergast, second from Trustee Milchiker. Any questions? No? Yeah, it's a good thing. Let's go ahead and vote. Item carries on unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Ten point two, the Award of Professional Services Agreements for Planning Services for the State Chancellor's Office, Submittals, Facilities Planning, and Programs Services.
So moved.
Motion. I already had my questions answered on this.
Okay, good. Motion from Trustee Jay, second from Trustee Milchiker. Any other questions? No? Let's vote on the item. Motion, sorry, the item carries on an eight to zero trustee yes vote, which includes a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to ten point three, Saddleback College Gateway Building, Change Order Number Three, McCarthy Building Company. So, this is a change order. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Trustee Jay.
I second it.
Second from Trustee Milchiker. And it's nice to drive up here every board meeting and see the progress that's going on. Wow.
I do have a question, though.
Really? It's looking really good. And now, there's a question.
Yeah. That's a pretty significant change order. How was that missed in the original process? I mean, change orders are typically maybe two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars? Almost a million? That's a big hoops.
Well, this is a lot of things combined. It's not just one item. And so, we've been working with the contractor on the various things. Some of the things were required by the Division of State Architects while they are on-site looking at things. It's very common that they will make changes and say that you need additional welding that needs to be done or additional structural things. One of the things in here is, there was an issue with the ceiling attachments, that they wanted additional attachments made. So, that's in there. As the building's going up, we were looking at safety issues, and we had the chief come through and look at it from a safety aspect. So, there was additional infrastructure that was asked for so that we could put in additional cameras. The IT department asked for additional infrastructure as well, cabling in there. So, it's a combination of things. It's not just one item. But a lot of times, when everyone is reviewing the plans, you're trying to catch everything. But as the building goes up and the users and the experts start looking at the building, that's sometimes when we find additional things that need to occur from a safety aspect, from an IT aspect. Not so much aesthetics, but even with the DSA inspectors.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The item passed on a seven to zero, or six to zero trustee yes vote, student trustee yes, and one trustee not present. Item ten point four, Saddleback College Campus Landscaping Improvements Project, another change order, a number three with Los Angeles Engineering. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion from Trustee Jay, second from Trustee Milchiker. Any questions on this change order? No? All right, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a seven, six to zero trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote and one trustee not present. Now, we will move on to ten point five, the Award of IT Professional Services Agreements for IT Consulting Services, Synergy Nimble Redisk, JB Technology, and I3 Solutions. Is there a motion and a second?
I'll so move, and I had my questions answered on this already also. Thank you.
I second it.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Jay. Any other questions that may not have been answered? All right, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now, on to eleven point oh and eleven point one. Human Resources, Academic Employees, Academic Classified Administrators, Managers, Personnel Actions, Ratifications. Are there any changes?
No changes, but this item does include two employment contracts, so I do have a readout. The first position with the contract is Director of Health and Wellness Center for Saddleback College. Employee name is Dr. Angelito De La Cruz. Contract date, September fifth, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Range eighteen, step one, annual salary one fifty-four, four seventy-six. The second position is Assistant Dean of Humanities and Social Sciences, Dr. Jessica Cavan. Contract dates, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Range twenty, step five, two oh six, five oh four is the salary. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Viscachill. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved, but.
Second.
But I just want to mention that.
Well, let's do the motion. Motion, Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Jay, and a question from Trustee Milchiker.
I just want to mention, I always like to mention the people that retire for ten or more years. And one of the nursing instructors, Judy Cagiano, is retiring after ten. And one of the nursing instructors, Judy Cagiano, is retiring after 10 years. So thank you for her service. Thank you.
Thank you for that recognition. Let's go ahead and vote on 11.1. 11.1 carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and, and student trustee abstention. Now we're on to 11.2, Classified Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes to the item. Is there a motion and a second?
So move.
There's a motion from trustee Milchiker, a second from trustee Jay. Any questions? You have a comment?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote, a student trustee and a student trustee abstention. Okay. No items under Educational and Technology Services. Let's move on to our information items. Staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers, the district initial proposal to California School Employee CSEA, Chapter 586, HERF, which we heard about earlier, the monthly summary, basic aid report, 13.6 Quarterly Investment Report, 13.7 Ontario PEB Trust Fund, 13.8 Pension Stabilization Trust Fund, and 13.9, which I think is a new addition. Correct? From trustee Prender, Prendergast, right? Rydell. So we have new information, item 13.9, as a response of trustee Rydell's request. Now we'll move on to reports from the administration and from governance groups. And to kick it off, we'll be our chancellor.
All right. Well, nice to see everyone. I already was able to provide an enrollment update. And I think the only thing I want to say is I just, I want to congratulate, there's a new term that's been coined tonight, Doctor's Hearn. That combines Dr. Hernandez and Dr. Stern.
I like, I like Sternandez.
Or Sternandez, however you wish to say it. Again, two fabulous opening sessions, delivered differently, but, but both equally told the story of the, of the, of the human condition and the work that's before us. So really want to congratulate both college presidents and, and your respective teams. They were just fantastic. And then the only other thing I want to just acknowledge is I, I really appreciated hearing about the professional development focus with the classified senate and the academic senates as well. Because oftentimes we talk about best practices and high-impact practices and these kinds of things. But who employs and makes decisions on best practices? It's the practitioners and it's the leaders. So we are producing best practitioners, you know, through continued professional learning. And we're doing it just so robustly. I love hearing about just the intention behind it. So I just wanted to congratulate the senates and the faculty and our classified professionals for that work. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor Barnes. Let's see, we'll start off with Saddleback College President Elliot Stern.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the trustees for attending events and for all of the faculty, classified professionals and managers who attended events this week and particularly to the students who made this college feel. They gave it a vibe that it hasn't had in about three and a half years. They filled the quad. They pulled out the red and rondack chairs. They were playing cornhole. They were playing human-scale chess. And we haven't had that feeling in a long time, and it, it felt really good. So thanks all who, who made all that stuff happen and all who participated in it. I want to call attention and highlight one thing from my report this month, and that is, and forgive me, I know I talk about this a lot, ZTC. But I'll tell you why I want to talk about it. It is really the little train that could. It's the initiative that never gets enough credit and really does so much for our students, both in terms of access, student success, and in closing equity gaps. So this is an important year for us. At the end of last year, we were just closing in on becoming a majority ZTC college, so just hitting the 50% mark. This semester, one semester later, 57% of our enrollments are now ZTC and well over half of our sections are ZTC. Zero textbook costs, no cost to students. In many cases, the cost for student, for student textbook actually exceeds the fees that we charge in our district. So this is not a small undertaking. This undertaking owes a lot of gratitude to the people who coordinate it. So Maureen Ammoni originally, and now falling in her footsteps, Kim DiArcy, and the faculty coordinators, Nicole Major and Jen Pacula. But I also want to give a shout out to the faculty who spend hours, days, weeks sometimes finding the open educational resources and zero textbook costs for the advantage of their students. What this all comes down to is a savings in cost to students that many people don't realize is quite significant. So I just did back-of-the-envelope calculations for a Friday update a couple of weeks ago. Using a conservative figure of $100 per textbook, we're currently saving students at Saddleback College about $3 million per semester, so about $7 million a year in costs. And to put that in perspective for you, we're about to have a special session on housing coming up this fall. And if we were to create housing for students and create a savings for 400 students of about $1,000 per month from market rate housing, that would add up to $4.8 million for that 80, $100 million investment. ZTC is giving us a greater return to students, greater savings than costs than all of our housing projects will. That doesn't take away from any of my advocacy for housing, but it puts in perspective the value of this to our students. It puts money in their wallets that they can use for other sources. So thank you for all the people who participate and congratulations to all in the college who made us not just majority, but coming up on supermajority ZTC college, a leader in the country. Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you for that, Dr. Stern. Dr. Hernandez from Irvine Valley College.
Thank you, Board President Jamal. I also wanted to say that like trustee Inman, we all look forward to the first week and the first day of classes. And I do want to express my gratitude to all who have worked so hard over the summer to prepare the campus, the classrooms, the technology, the grounds. We have, like Saddleback, experienced, there was a theme all of last week with any faculty or staff member that I spoke to, and that was the incredible energy that was felt by this increased presence of on-ground students. And I think that's reflective in our growing enrollments. And it is not just an energy from physically seeing students on campus, but whether it was our resource fair or any of the other Welcome Week activities, there was a sense of students wanting to reengage. Many of those students have felt very isolated during the last couple of years, and they are really looking forward to opportunities to get involved, to get connected. I particularly wanted to thank, as I said, all the grounds folks, the IT, all the faculty who have prepared their instruction for a wonderful kickoff. Also, the many volunteers that greeted our students during the first four days through our Welcome Week booths. We had four different booths at different entry points that was open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM with over 50-some volunteers, many who signed up on multiple times and, and occasions. And we served over 5,500 students with basic information. Sometimes it was as simple as, where is building X? Sometimes it was providing bottled water, some snacks. And it truly, I think, represented an opportunity for students to be fully welcomed. And we are just all very much looking forward to this incredible academic year. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Hernandez. Now I will call on our vice chancellor of Business Services, Anne Marie Gable.
No report.
Thank you for that. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, Cindy Vichikov. Oh, yes, she preempted me. I like it. All right, it's your chance. Still the best dressed. All right. No, I'm kidding. Any report? Wait. Okay, thank you. And I believe that wraps us up. Okay. Did I miss anybody? Ah, yes. I have to make an announcement. We will be returning to closed session as soon as we adjourn from here. And I want everyone to know that there might be a report out when we return. So thank you. All right, we are reconvening our open session, and I'd like to ask the clerk to report out any actions taken in closed session.
There were no actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, trustee Inman. Hearing that, we are adjourned. Thank you.